Is that the general rule is that the right to strike, just like the right to lockout, implicitly flows from the right of association. And there is no need to expressly provide for such right. It is only where that right to strike or to lockout is to be curtailed that provision to that effect will be required to be made in legislation. By analogy, in the Convention, the right to strike is naturally derived from the right of workers to organize themselves. And there is absolutely no need for this right to be expressly stipulated in the Convention. However, since this right to strike is not absolute, Articles eight and nine of the Convention provide instances where such right can be curtailed. Coming back to Mauritius, after the 1938 ordinance, there were three trade dispute ordinances in 1937, 1954, and 1965, which further limited the right to strike, especially in essential services. But again, there was no specific reference to the right to strike in these ordinance, only reference where the strike could be unlawful. Then came the Industrial Relations Act of 1973, which consolidated the law relating to organization of trade unions and limitation on their ability to go to strike. Now, this is a very important legislation because it was enacted after the general workers' strike that almost paralyzed the country in 1971 and led to a state of public emergency. Consequently, the Industrial Relations Act provided stringent procedural steps to be followed for lockout or strike not to be unlawful. Extensive power were given to the minister to prevent unions from going on strike. Now, interestingly, in 2001, at the request of the Mauritius government, ILO sent a senior legal expert to advise the ministry on the ratification of Convention 87. In her report, the expert stated that the ratification of Convention 87 would require certain amendments to be brought to the Industrial Relations Act, in particular, to ensure that the law of Mauritius does not impede or restrict the freedom of association. And I quote, "This would imply a revision of the provision of the Industrial Relations Act regarding the right to strike." So already, ILO in 2001, before Mauritius ratified the Convention, Mauritius ratified the Convention in 2005. So ILO expert told Mauritius, if you're going to ratify the Convention 87, you will have to amend your law to make it compatible with the Convention, in particular, the right of strike. So accordingly, the Industrial Relations Act 1973 was repealed and replaced by the Employment Relations Act of 2008, which was drafted in consultation with experts from the International Labour Organization. The Employment Relations Act, for the first time, explicitly and positively recognized the right to strike. It set out clear procedure to be followed before workers could go on strike, which were less stringent than under the preceding Industrial Relations Act. It also provided instances where the strike would be unlawful and constitute an offense. Interestingly, the Employment Relations Act also expressly provided that no member of the police force would have a right to strike. This is consistent with the limitation permitted under Article nine, subsection one of the Convention, which allows national law to determine the application of freedom of association to armed forces and the police. So at the time Mauritius ratified the Convention in 2005, it was done on the basis that right to strike was an integral part of the freedom of association protected under Convention 87. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, Section 13 of the Mauritian Constitution guarantees freedom of assembly and association, including the right of a person to form or join trade unions and other association for the protection of his interests. This right is again not absolute, but may be restricted in relation to public officers and in the interest of defense, public order, public morality, public health, or the right of others, provided that such restrictions are reasonably justifiable in a democratic society. It is humbly submitted that the right to strike in Mauritius is consistent with and protected by Section 13 of the Constitution. Now, to a large extent, Section 13 of the Constitution of Mauritius is similar to the Convention and both protect the rights of persons to form or belong to trade unions for the protection of their interests. Just like the Convention, Section 13 of the Mauritius Constitution does not expressly provide for a right to strike. However, it has always been understood in Mauritius that Section 13 guarantees and protects the right to strike. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, I would respectfully invite the Court to consider how in practice Mauritius has interpreted the constitutional right of a person to join a trade union to protect his right as including the right of that person to organize strikes within limits provided by law as reasonably justifiable in a democratic society. And apply the same analogy to the Convention as protecting the right to strike within the parameters set out in the Convention. Mr. President, I now kindly request you to invite Mrs. Ramjewan Verma, Assistant Secretary General, to elaborate on our legal reasoning and conclude the oral statement on behalf of the Republic of Mauritius. Thank you.
I thank His Excellency Liza Utema for his presentation. I now call upon Ms. Priya Edu Ramjewan Verma to take the floor. Madame, you have the floor.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is an immense privilege for me to appear before you on behalf of the Republic of Mauritius. The Honorable Minister of Labour and Industrial Relations, Mr. Rezautim, has aptly set out the position of Mauritius on the question which is before the Court today. And he has traced the historical development of the right to strike in our country. With your leave, I shall now turn to the legal submissions that demonstrate why, as a matter of international law, ILO Convention Number 87 must be interpreted as encompassing the right to strike, not as an unfettered or absolute liberty, but as a qualified right, subject to legitimate restrictions, which are reasonably justifiable in a democratic society. Mauritius submits that ILO Convention Number 87 inherently protects the right to strike. A holistic reading of the text of the Convention supports this construction. While the Convention does not explicitly mention the right to strike, Article three confers on workers' organizations the right to organize their administration and activities and to formulate their programs. Properly understood, this provision necessarily englobes the right to take collective action. And collective action necessarily entails the right to strike as one of the most impactful means by which workers' organizations may pursue and defend the interest of their members. Mr. President, Article three should be read together with Article 10 of the Convention. Article 10 leaves no doubt that the very purpose of a worker's organization is to further and defend the interest of the workers. A worker's organization cannot, in the pursuit of this goal, be debad from taking lawful strike action. Its right to organize activities and formulate programs under Article three of the Convention needs to be given full effect and meaning. Mauritius submits that the right to strike is naturally and logically included within the right to organize activities. It remains an essential tool for workers to achieve fair working conditions, negotiate with employers, and protect themselves from exploitation. Without it, freedom of association would be rendered largely illusory. As Article 31.1 of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties requires, the Convention must be interpreted in good faith, in accordance with ordinary meaning, to be given to the terms of the treaty in their context and in the light of its object and purpose. The preamble to Convention 87 forms part of this context and sheds light on the object and purpose of the Convention. Notably, the preamble recalls the preamble to the Constitution of the International Labour Organization, declaring that recognition of the principle of freedom of association is a means to improve conditions of labor. The preamble also recalls the Declaration of Philadelphia, which affirms that freedom of association is essential to sustained progress. No doubt, the object and purpose of Convention 87 is to secure effective freedom of association and the right to organize. Bearing in mind this objective and purpose, a combined reading of Articles three and 10 of the Convention compels the interpretation that the right to strike is protected under Convention 87. To interpret it otherwise would mean diluting the effectiveness of Articles three and 10, as well as the Convention as a whole. Mauritius therefore advocates for a purposeive interpretation of the Convention, one that gives real and effective meaning to the freedom of association that it enshrines. Mauritius further submits that Convention 87 calls for an interpretation which is in harmony with other international human rights instruments. In the Namibia Advisory Opinion, the Court emphasized that treaties and international instruments should not be read in isolation, but rather in their broader international context, taken into account subsequent developments in international law and practice. The key passage is at paragraph 53 of the Advisory Opinion, where the Court stated, and I quote, "An international instrument has to be interpreted and applied within the framework of the entire legal system prevailing at the time of the interpretation." Mr. President, the right to strike is expressly guaranteed in Article 8.1d of the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights. It recognizes the right to strike, provided that the right is exercised in conformity with the laws of the particular country. Article 22.1 of the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights guarantees the right to freedom of association, including the right to form and join trade unions for the protection of one's interests. Though the right to strike has not been expressly prescribed in the ICCPR, it has been mentioned in concluding observations that the committee has issued. For instance, in the concluding observations on the sixth periodic report of the Dominican Republic, the committee highlighted the state party's duty to safeguard workers' freedom of association in practice, including the right to organize, the right to collective bargaining, and the right to strike. The European Convention on Human Rights, in Article 11, guarantees the freedom of association and assembly. It has been settled by the European Court of Human Rights that the right to strike is protected under Article 11. Mauritius has ratified both the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights and the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. In addition, Section 13 of our Constitution is closely aligned in substance with Article 11 of the European Convention on Human Rights. Collectively, these instruments affirm that the right to strike is recognized and protected. The supervisory bodies of the ILO have over several decades consistently affirmed that the right to strike is a fundamental corollary of Convention 87. Their authoritative reports, repeatedly endorsed by the International Labour Conference, constitute subsequent practice in the application of Convention 87, within the meaning of Article 31.3b of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties. The near-universal ratification of Convention 87, combined with state practice and supervisory consensus, demonstrate that the right to strike has acquired the character of a customary international law as part of the corpus of international labor law. Accordingly, Mauritius submits that Convention 87 cannot be interpreted in isolation. It must be interpreted within the broader framework of international human rights law, which consistently recognizes the right to strike as an indispensable component of freedom of association. Only such an integrated and purposeive interpretation ensures that the Convention retains its effet utile, safeguarding workers' rights in a manner consistent with contemporary international legal standards. Mr. President, members of the Court, Mauritius submits that, while fundamental, the right to strike is not absolute and unfettered. The Convention itself recognizes, under Articles eight and nine, the qualified nature of this right. First one to Article eight, workers and their organizations are enjoined to respect the domestic laws of the member states so long as these laws do not impair the guarantees provided under the Convention. As regards armed forces and the police, Article nine leaves it to the member states to determine by national laws or regulations the extent to which the guarantees under the Convention shall apply to them. ILO supervisory bodies have recognized that the right to strike can be restricted in essential services where a strike's interruption may endanger life, personal safety, or health of the whole or part of the population. Mauritius submits that this is the correct position. The domestic framework in Mauritius reflects this very conception of the right to strike. Our Constitution, which is the supreme law of the land, guarantees the freedom of assembly and association under Section 13. Its text is comparable to Article 11 of the European Convention on Human Rights, the very provision under which the Strasbourg Court has read the right to strike. Akin to Article 11 of the ECHR, Section 13 of our Constitution guarantees the freedom of assembly and association, whilst at the same time permitting restrictions which are reasonably justifiable in a democratic society. Our Employment Relations Act gives effect to this balance. It recognizes the right to strike, but imposes procedural safeguards, such as exhaustion of conciliation and mediation, holding of strike ballots, prior notifications, and the provision of minimum service in certain sectors. There is, however, prohibition on the members of the police force to strike. Hence, whilst Mauritius expressly recognizes the fundamental right to strike, it has regulatory measures designed to reconcile competing interests. Mauritius submits that this very principle should guide the interpretation of Convention Number 87, namely that it includes the right to strike, but its exercise may be lawfully regulated. Mauritius therefore respectfully concludes by submitting the following three points. First, ILO Convention Number 87 inherently protects the right to strike as an indispensable component of freedom of association. Second, this right, while fundamental, is not absolute. Its exercise may be subject to legitimate and lawful restrictions in accordance with democratic principles. And third, such interpretation is fully aligned with the object and purpose of the Convention and ensures coherence with a wider body of international human rights law. Mr. President, members of the Court, Mauritius is honored to place these submissions before you. I thank you for attention.
I thank the representatives of Mauritius for their presentation. I now invite the delegation of Mexico to address the Court, and I give the floor to Her Excellency Ambassador Carmen Moreno Toscano.
Mr. President, Madame Vice President, distinguished members of the Court, my name is Carmen Moreno Toscano, and it is an honor for me, as Ambassador of Mexico to the Kingdom of the Netherlands, to appear before the International Court of Justice on behalf of the United Mexican States in these advisory proceedings. At the outset, allow me to stress that Mexico considers that the Court's jurisdiction to render the requested advisory opinion is fully established. The request was duly made by a specialized agency authorized by the General Assembly to seek advisory opinions under Article 96, paragraph two of the United Nations Charter, and Article nine of the 1946 Agreement between the United Nations and the International Labour Organization. The question referred is on the liability of a legal nature, and it arises squarely within the scope of the ILO's mandate. Furthermore, there are no compelling reasons for the Court to decline to exercise its advisory function. Indeed, as the written proceedings have shown, none of the states or organizations that submitted observations has challenged the Court's judicial function in this case. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, the question submitted by ILO is of particular significance to my country. For Mexico, the protection of the freedom of association, the right to organize, and the right to strike are fundamental to the realization of social justice. The debate within ILO concerning the right to strike has generated uncertainty for workers, employers, and governments alike. It is therefore of the utmost importance for Mexico that this Court brings clarity through its authoritative interpretation of the freedom of association and protection of the right to organize Convention. With this in mind, and with the permission of the Honorable Court, the statement of Mexico supporting the protection of the right to strike under Convention Number 87 will be delivered as follows. First, the interpretation of Convention Number 87 under the general rule of treaty interpretation. Second, the interpretation of Convention Number 87 by resorting to supplementary means. Third, the views of Mexico regarding the content of the right to strike under Convention Number 87. Fourth, our concluding remarks. With the permission of this Honorable Court, I would ask you now, Mr. President, to invite Ms. Patricia Pérez-Galeana, Deputy Legal Advisor of the Mexican Ministry for Foreign Affairs, to present Mexico's interpretation of Convention Number 87 under the general rule of interpretation.
I thank Ambassador Moreno Toscano for her presentation. I now invite Ms. Patricia Pérez-Galeana to the podium. Madame, you have the floor.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is a privilege to stand before you again today. The question at the heart of these proceedings is straightforward, whether the right to strike of workers and their organizations is protected under Convention 87. This is a matter of pure legal interpretation with only two possible answers. The current controversy exists only because a minority of states have answered the question in the negative. In fact, only three states maintain that position in these proceedings, which, in our opinion, is incorrect. This Court is uniquely placed to disangle the knot and to provide clarity and certainty for ILO, its members, and workers, and employers. We are mindful that the advisory opinions of this Court carry great authority and that, in the particular case of ILO, they have a special legal effect, as enshrined in Article 37 of its Constitution. The Court's reply will have a decisive weight in resolving this discussion. To answer the question put forward to this Court, I will address the legal interpretation that Mexico supports under Article 31 of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties. The answer to the question at hand must be given through the general rule of treaty interpretation, which, as the Court has recognized, is codified in Article 31 of the Vienna Convention. In the Casacili-Seruru Island case, the Court applied this rule to a treaty predating the Vienna Convention, as it is the case now, thereby affirming its customary character. According to Article 31 of the Vienna Convention, text, context, and purpose were together. The relevant provision that lies at the center of the discussion on whether the right to strike is or not protected under Convention 87 is Article three. Although this provision refers to workers and employers' organizations, the question put before the Court limits the required interpretation to the right of workers and their organizations to strike. Therefore, we will circumscribe our interpretation to the portion of the Convention regarding the rights and interests of workers. From Article three, it can be drawn in short that workers' organizations have the right to organize their activities. However, this is still too broad in meaning. To understand what kind of activities are covered, we should look at Article 10, which clarifies that an organization has the purpose of furthering and defending the interests of workers. By virtue of the autonomy of workers' organizations, they have the right to organize any activity they deem relevant to promote and defend workers' interests. The right to strike is a fundamental tool for their protection. This principle has been clearly affirmed by the UN Special Reporture on the Rights to Freedom of Peaceful Assembly and of Association. In his 2016 report to the General Assembly, he underscored that the strikes alongside trade unions and collective bargaining are traditional means through which workers can assert and defend their rights. Some have argued that the absence of explicit reference to the right to strike means that Convention 87 does not protect it. They have also argued that the object and purpose of the Convention is limited to the protection of freedom of association protection of freedom of association and the right to organize. Nonetheless, the object and purpose of the convention supports the view that the right to strike is also protected. The title of the convention and its preamble clearly indicate that it intends to protect both freedom of association and the right to organize. But what is the purpose of this protection? The preamble and the text of the treaty clarify that it is for improving labor conditions and for defending the interests of workers' organizations. Without the possibility of engaging in collective action through strike, the protection of workers' interests will remain largely limited and ineffective. The UN Special Rapporteur has also stated that trade unions and the right to strike are fundamental tools for achieving workers' rights, since they constitute mechanisms to defend their interests collectively and engage with big business and government on a more equal footing. Statements by groups of states and practice at the national level build up on the understanding that Convention eighty-seven protects the right to strike. The reasoning is that there is an intrinsic link between freedom of association and the right to strike, since the protection of the latter is necessary to fully realize the former. This intrinsic link is also recognized in the United States-Mexico-Canada Agreement, which reaffirms the parties' commitment to uphold labor rights as set out by the ILO. The treaty expressly clarifies that, and I quote, "For greater certainty, the right to strike is linked to the right of, to freedom of association, which cannot be realized without protecting the right to strike." In sum, without the right to strike, unions are effectively powerless to promote and protect their own interests and those workers, which is the very purpose of those organizations. Mexico highlights that this court has treated broadly framed clauses in a matter that gives them effective operation, considering their object and purpose. In the Gabchikovo-Nagimaru's project case, this court held that Article twenty-six of the Vienna Convention, which embodies the obligation to perform treaties in good faith, implies that the purpose of a treaty and the intention of the parties concluding it should prevail over its literal application. Thus, the principle of good faith obliges states to apply treaties in a reasonable way and in such a manner that its purpose can be realized. It is clear that the purpose of Convention eighty-seven and the intention of states was to secure the autonomy of workers, organizations to carry out activities for furthering and defending the interests of workers, as provided in Article three in relation to Article ten, which necessarily entails the protection of the right to strike. We call upon the court to interpret Convention eighty-seven so as to give the right to freedom of association a practical and effective meaning, including inter alia the right to strike to advance their interests. In its advisory opinion on reparations for injuries, this court inferred the United Nations' capacity to bring claims on behalf of its agents as a necessary interpretation of the Charter to ensure the effective fulfillment of its functions. Likewise, in early Iowa versus Ireland, applying the Convention for the Protection of Human Rights and Fundamental Freedoms, the European Court of Human Rights held that the intention of said Convention was to guarantee not rights that are theoretical or illusory, but rights that are practical and effective, which in the particular case required the implicit recognition of one right to achieve the realization of an explicit treaty provision. By the same logic, the effective exercise of freedom of association by workers and their organizations entails protecting the means necessary to advance their members' interests, including the resort to strike. To do otherwise will render the right to freedom of association ineffective. Now, with the permission of the court, I ask you, Mister President, to give the floor to Mister Pablo Arrocha, Legal Advisor of the Mexican Ministry of Foreign Affairs, to continue with the presentation of Mexico's position in these proceedings. Thank you.
I thank Ms. Pérez-Galeana for her presentation. I now call upon Mister Pablo Arrocha to take the floor.
Mister President, Your Excellencies, it is a great honor for me to appear again before this court, and I will address Mexico's position regarding supplementary means of interpretation and the content of the right to strike. Since the general rule of interpretation leads to an affirmative answer to the question presented before this court, Mexico maintains that it should not be necessary to have recourse to supplementary means of interpretation. Nonetheless, if this court decides to resort to such means, we argue that this confirmed the interpretation resulting from the previous exercise. Article thirty-two of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties establishes that supplementary means of interpretation may include the preparatory work of the treaty, which in this case suggests that the lack of an explicit reference to the right to strike was only a drafting choice, not an intention to exclude its protection. During the process of drafting Convention eighty-seven, the ILO transmitted a questionnaire to governments, asking whether it would be desirable to include a provision recognizing that the right of association of public officials by international regulation should in no way prejudge the question of the right of such officials to strike. Out of the thirty-one states that responded, only two expressed that there was no link between freedom of association and the right to strike. The majority of states did not intend to exclude completely any relationship between these rights, but to preserve their competence to regulate specific modalities. In the end, this provision was not included because this issue was left for states to regulate in their domestic law. The mere fact that some states believed that Convention eighty-seven should not prejudge the regulation of the right to strike under national law by no way means that they intended to exclude it from implicit protection. Excellencies, supplementary means mentioned in Article thirty-two of the VCLT are non-exhaustive. As highlighted by Professor Charles Yallow, ILC Special Rapporteur on subsidiary means for the determination of rules of international law, judicial and other decisions, when used to interpret treaties, may potentially operate in a dual capacity, both as supplementary means under Article thirty-two of the VCLT and also as-
Sorry, please speak slowly for the interpreter. Thank you very much.
Of course, Mister President, and again, I apologize to the interpreters if I was speaking too fast. As I was saying, the supplementary means of Article thirty-two are also complementary to subsidiary means understood under Article thirty-eight, Paragraph one D of the statute of this court. With this in mind, Mexico considers that additional interpretative elements reinforce the conclusion that the right to strike finds harbor in Convention eighty-seven. The pronouncements of ILO's supervisory bodies, though not binding, carry significant persuasive authority. Particularly, the Committee of Experts on the Application on Conventions and Recommendations and the Committee on Freedom of Association have affirmed that the right to strike is protected under the convention. This interpretation of the Committee on Freedom of Association has also been upheld by the Inter-American Court of Human Rights in the case of former employees of the Judiciary versus Guatemala. Similarly, in Energy Jap Yol Sen versus Turquille, the European Court of Human Rights interpreted Article eleven of the European Convention on Human Rights, which is silent on the right to strike, and held that strike action falls within the protection of freedom of association because, and I quote, "Strike action, which enables a union to make its voice heard, is an important aspect of protecting the interests of union members," end of quote. Moreover, in the case of Herbatzki-Liechnitsky Syndicat versus Croatia, the ECHR indicated that strike is the most powerful instrument to protect occupational interests of union members. To support its decision, the European Court expressly relied on ILO Convention eighty-seven and the practice of its supervisory bodies, treating strike as the inseparable corollary of freedom of association. On top of this, the Inter-American Court of Human Rights has recognized the right to strike as one of the fundamental rights of workers, which is a legitimate means for defending economic, social, and occupational interests. Set court also mentioned that, in addition to being broadly recognized in international corpus juris, the right to strike is a general principle of international law, embedded in the national constitutions and laws of seventeen members of the Organization of American States, all of them parties to the Convention eighty-seven. Therefore, both principal and supplementary means of interpretation reinforce the same conclusion, that the right to strike is indeed protected by Convention eighty-seven. I now turn to the content of the right to strike. Despite the fact that the court is not called upon to determine the content of this right, we consider that its guidance on this question would be of great assistance to ILO and its members in giving effect to Convention eighty-seven. This would also be relevant to avoid unreasonable interpretations. For instance, some states have contended that because the Convention applies equally to workers and employers, any right protected under Article three must be recognized for both. However, a reasonable reading of Article three, along with Article ten, leads to a clear distinction between activities that promote and defend workers' interests on the one hand, and those that do the same for employers on the other. Consequently, Mexico respectfully suggests that three basic elements should be considered when determining its content. First, the right to strike belongs to workers' organizations as an essential component of their autonomy under Article three of the Convention. Thus, the Convention protects workers' rights to strike when it is exercised collectively by workers and under the auspices of the organization. Second, this right may be exercised to promote and defend workers' interests, as it is established in the purposes of workers' organizations under Article ten. And three, in accordance with Article eight of the Convention, the exercise of the right to strike would need to comply with domestic law, and such legislation should not impede its exercise. This understanding is supported both by treaty law and the ILO supervisory body's practice. It enables the court to clarify the protection of the right to strike while respecting the diversity of national arrangements. As suggested by George Pinto de Albuquerque in its separate opinion in the aforementioned case of Croatia before the ECHR, the right to strike can also be derived from Convention eighty-seven in light of a holistic interpretation of other ILO instruments. Mexico's domestic law reflects this same logic. Our constitution recognizes workers' freedom of association and expressly protects strikes. The federal labor law defines strike as a collective, temporary suspension of work, and specifies its legitimate aims, all of which relate to the defense and promotion of workers' interests. In Mexico, the right to strike is the strongest tool to which workers can resort when defending and furthering the rights in a negotiation with employers. The Mexican Supreme Court of Justice has highlighted that the right to strike is conceived on the principle of social justice, of achieving a balance between the factors of production, that is, the labor force represented by associated workers, and the capital held by the employer. These elements serve to reinforce that Convention eighty-seven does protect the right to strike of workers and their organizations. Mister President, distinguished members of the court, allow me to conclude with the following remarks. The question placed before you is simple in form, but it's very deep in significance: whether the right to strike is protected under Convention eighty-seven. In answering, the court is not asked to legislate nor to innovate, but to interpret the Convention faithfully, applying the law as it stands. Throughout our submissions, Mexico has shown that the general rule of interpretation under Article thirty-one of the VCLT leads to one conclusion: the text of Article three in relation to Article ten of Convention eighty-seven embraces strike action as a legitimate activity of workers' organizations. The context and the purpose of the Convention confirm that freedom of association, if it is to be effective, must include the ability to defend workers' interests through collective action. The application of supplementary means by virtue of Article thirty-two of the VCLT confirms this interpretation. The law, when read in its fullness, points in one direction. To acknowledge that the right to strike is protected under Convention eighty-seven is not to expand the treaty beyond its scope, but to ensure that its content is not deprived of substance. It is to read the Convention so that it breathes, not so that it suffocates. It is to affirm that international law safeguards not only the form of freedom of association, but its practical reality. In this way, the court's answer will contribute to the sound functioning of the ILO, to the coherence of international law, and to the architecture of national law. It will demonstrate once again that international law has the capacity to strengthen institutions through clarity and to protect human dignity. Mexico respectfully urges the court to uphold an effective interpretation that prioritizes the rights of workers and social justice over private interests. Determining that the right to strike of workers and their organizations is indeed protected under Convention eighty-seven would confirm existing law, allow its practical application, and fulfill the Convention's purpose. In the nineteen forty-four Declaration of Philadelphia cited already by the delegation of Mauritius, the ILO stated that social justice is the foundation of international peace, that freedom of association and the right to collective bargaining are fundamental principles of the ILO, and that labor rights are inseparable from human rights. To reaffirm that today, that the right of strike is protected under Convention eighty-seven, is to remain faithful to that legacy. Excellencies, Mexico's constitution and its nature as a social welfare state are the direct result of the working-class fight for its rights and freedoms. The right to strike is at the heart of this struggle, and it must therefore be understood and assessed in its full dimension, not merely as a legal modality, but as a mechanism earned to guarantee the dignity and well-being of workers. We invite the court to address the question before it from this point of view, with the full acknowledgement that its opinion can and will have a real impact in the lives of workers across the world, and to see in these proceedings an opportunity to express the social conscience of the court and to bring it closer to the people. Thank you.
I thank the representatives of Mexico for their presentation. I now invite the delegation of Norway to address the court, and I give the floor to Mister Christian Jergel.
Mister President, distinguished members of the court, it's an honor to appear before you today on behalf of the Kingdom of Norway. Norway supported the decision of the governing body of the ILO on tenth November twenty-twenty-three to request the court to render and advise your opinion on the question of whether ILO Convention Number eighty-seven of ninth July nineteen forty-eight, hereafter the Convention or Convention Number eighty-seven, establishes and protects a right to strike for workers and their organizations. Being mindful of the importance of promoting the effectiveness of international human rights and international labor standards, Norway has been concerned about the apparent institutional impasse within the ILO relating to this particular issue. Norway has therefore, since twenty fourteen, consistently supported proposals to refer the question to the ICJ in accordance with Article thirty-seven, paragraph one of the ILO Constitution, hereafter the Constitution. Norway trusts that the court's examination of the question of whether the convention provides a right to strike for workers and their organizations will contribute to resolving the institutional impasse within the ILO and thus assist the organization and its members in their future work. Mr. President, Norway submits that the convention does establish a right to strike for workers and their organizations. In my statement today, I will explain that position. I will begin with brief remarks relating to questions concerning the jurisdiction of the court and the legal state of its opinion in this case. I will thereafter explain the basis for our interpretation that Convention number eighty-seven does set forth a right to strike. Thereafter, I will present the views of Norway regarding the arguments made that a right to strike has crystallized as a rule of customary international law before finally commenting on issues related to the scope of protection established under the convention. I turn now to the question of the jurisdiction of the court. Norway is satisfied that the court has jurisdiction to issue an advisory opinion on the question put to it by the governing body of the ILO. The governing body of the ILO is competent to request an advisory opinion from the court on the question at issue, owing to the authorization given by the General Assembly of the United Nations acting on its competence under Article ninety-six, paragraph two of the Charter of the U.N., confer Article nine, paragraph two of the nineteen forty-six agreement between the United Nations and the International Labor Organization. I mention this since questions of jurisdiction and propriety have been raised by some participants in the proceedings. The decision of the governing body of the ILO to request an advisory opinion from the court was taken in performance of such authorization given by the resolution concerning the procedure for requests to the International Court of Justice for advisory opinions adopted by the National Labor Conference on twenty-seventh June nineteen forty-nine. The question posed, moreover, is indeed a legal question, directly related to interpretation of the convention, which the court will be capable of answering by reference to applicable international law. The jurisdiction of the court to offer an advisory opinion on the question at issue is therefore clearly established. Norway is also satisfied that an opinion by the court on the question posed to it in this case will be binding. It follows from Article thirty-seven, paragraph one of the Constitution that "Any question or dispute relating to the interpretation of this constitution or of any subsequent convention concluded by the members in pursuance of the provisions of this constitution shall be referred for decision to the International Court of Justice." The question posed to the court by the governing body of the ILO is a legal question relating to the interpretation of the convention, which was concluded by members of the ILO's governing body in pursuance of the provisions of its constitution. The term "decision," which is used in the wording of the relevant provision in Article thirty-seven, paragraph one of the Constitution, signifies that the effect of the court's opinion will be binding for the organization and its members. I make this point because in the opinion of Norway, the binding character of the court's decision on the matter is an important precursor in achieving a lasting settlement that may end the institutional impasse within the ILO relating to this issue. Mr. President, I now turn to the opinion of Norway relating to the interpretation of the convention. Norway submits that ILO Convention number eighty-seven sets forth a right to strike by workers and their organizations. Strike action is among the general and adequate means available to workers and their organizations to safeguard key interests protected by the convention. This view is the basis on which Norway implements its obligations under the convention. In line with the general principles of treaty interpretation, as reflected in Article thirty-one, paragraph one of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, the terms of the convention shall be interpreted in good faith in accordance with the ordinary meaning to be given to the terms of the treaty in their context and in light of its object and purpose. The relevant provisions for the issue at hand are found in Articles three and ten of the convention, as also noted by a number of other interventions. Article three, paragraph one of the convention provides that "Workers and employers' organizations shall have the right to draw up their constitutions and rules, to elect their representatives in full freedom, to organize their administration and activities, and to formulate their programs." Article three, paragraph two of the convention stipulates that "The public authorities shall refrain from any interference which would restrict this right or impede lawful exercise thereof." Article ten provides that "The term 'organization' means any organization of workers or of employers for furthering and defending the interests of workers and employers." "Workers and their organizations" under Article three, paragraphs one and two of the convention, "to draw up their constitutions and rules, to elect their representatives in full freedom, to organize their administration and activities, and to formulate their programs without interference from public authorities" is not merely a protection of a procedural nature. These provisions do not merely protect the ability to form an organization of some kind without any bearing on the actual nature of the substantive activities of that organization. The rights provided for under Article three include, in the opinion of Norway, "A right for those entities concerned to undertake certain forms of activities which are closely linked to the object and purpose of the organization and the act of entering into an organized relationship amongst workers." This is arguably what the terms of Article three speak of when stipulating that workers' organizations shall have the right to organize their administration and activities. The term "activities" denote the actions undertaken by the relevant organizations. Clearly, the fact that Article three protects activities of workers' organizations does not imply legal protection for any kind of activity simply because authored by workers' organizations, many of which are not unique to such organizations. Which it does imply, however, is that those activities which are generally regarded to be a natural part of trade union activities for the furthering and defending of the interests of workers and that have been so historically, shall enjoy legal protection under the convention. Article ten provides an important part of the textual context of Article three and stipulates that the term "organization" for the purposes of the convention shall be taken to mean "any organization of workers or employers for furthering and defending the interests of workers or of employers." This formulation indicates that the convention presumes that the steps regularly taken by those organizations for the furtherance and defense of workers' interests form a core of activities of the organizations referred to in Article three. Mr. President, those specific activities could thus be considered to enjoy protection as part of the overall freedom to organize guaranteed by the convention. In the opinion of Norway, negotiations backed up by the possibility of strike action are a natural part of the activities and programs of trade union organizations, and they have been so historically. Strike action is a primary means by which workers and their organizations in the ultimate case may stimulate action on the part of an employer towards the improvement of the terms and conditions of workers. There is an underlying economic logic to such action. The dramatic step of workers putting down their work places a cost on the employer that provides a clear incentive for the employer to enter into negotiations with workers to avoid this situation by agreeing on relevant and reasonable improvements to the terms and conditions for work. The knowledge that a strike represents a means available to workers and their organizations thus introduces the basis for a balance of power, parity between workers and employers, creating an incentive for the employers to negotiate with workers in good faith and avoid the possible escalation of a strike. This link between strike action and the activities of workers' organizations and its historical pedigree suggests that the provision providing workers' organizations a right to organize their activities and to formulate their programs should today be interpreted to include a right to plan and organize strike action as part of those activities. Reference may in this regard be had to the increasing tendency in the practice of states and in public international law to consider strike action as a normal part of the activities of workers' organizations and to interpretation of freedom of association standards in international law as including legal protection for certain core activities inherently related to the purpose of organizing workers. Article eight of the International Covenant on Economic, Cultural, and Social Rights explicitly includes a right to strike as part of its stipulation of the right to freely form trade unions. This underscores the close link considered to exist between strike action and the activities of trade unions. Moreover, although a right to engage in strike action has not yet been specifically recognized as an essential element of trade union freedom under the European Convention on Human Rights, there has been a development in the case law of the European Court of Human Rights to the effect that strike action is protected by Article eleven of that convention. As with ILO Convention number eighty-seven, the right to strike is not expressly mentioned in Article eleven of the European Convention on Human Rights. In line with the principle of systemic integration of treaties, which is also given expression in Article thirty-one, paragraph three C of the VCLT, the regulation of freedom of association under these instruments should be taken into account in the interpretation of the ILO Convention number eighty-seven. In Norway's opinion, the elements here referred to, "Warrant and interpretation of the convention under current circumstances according to which the planning for or organization of a strike is viewed as part of the activities in which workers' organizations shall have a right to engage pursuant to Article three, paragraph one of the convention." Moreover, it warrants that such action or the plausible threat thereof also constitutes one of the means generally applied by workers' organizations for the furtherance and defense of the interests of workers pursuant to Article ten of the convention. We note that this confers with the position taken by the ILO Committee of Experts on the Application of Conventions and Recommendations, hereafter the Committee of Experts, since its first statement on the issue in nineteen fifty-nine and as further developed in general service in nineteen seventy-three, nineteen eighty-three, ninety-four, and in two thousand and twelve. When finding that the convention does not limit the right of states to prohibit strikes for public employees exercising public authority, the Committee of Experts presumed the existence of a more general right to strike. Likewise, the existence of a right to strike pursuant to the convention has also been presumed by the Committee on Freedom of Association, a tripartite committee that has played a key role in developing the interpretation of the convention. Norway maintains that statements and recommendations issued by the committees under the convention are not legally binding. And consequently, neither governments nor the court are required to model their interpretation of the convention on that of the ILO's supervisory bodies. I note in this regard that such statements and recommendations do not represent subsequent practice, in the meaning of Article one, paragraph three, letter B of the VCLT, as the issuance of such opinions do not establish an agreement of the parties regarding the interpretation of the convention. However, the practice of the ILO and its expert bodies may qualify as subsidiary means that may assist in the determination of the applicable rules to be drawn from this ILO convention, as provided for under Article thirty-eight, paragraph one, letter D of the statute. Norway agrees with the observation of the International Law Commission that subsidiary means are not the source of international law, but helpful means that may assist in the determination of the existence and content of international law. It has been argued by some participants in these proceedings that the rule protecting the organization of strike has also been developed as part of customary international law. Norway would like to make two points in relation to those claims. First, the court has not been asked by the governing body of the ILO to opine on the question of whether the organization of strike is protected under customary international law. It should therefore refrain from doing so. The question referred to the court asks for an examination and interpretation of ILO Convention number eighty-seven. The competence of the governing body of the ILO pursuant to Article thirty-seven, paragraph one of the Constitution to request the binding decision of the court does not extend to general questions of customary international law. Second, there is not evidence to support the argument that the right to strike has been established as part of customary international law binding on all states. The formation of customary international law depends on the existence of a general practice accepted as law. The phrase "accepted as law" here implies "accepted as law" on the grounds of constituting a rule of customary international law. In line with the presumption of the International Law Commission in its draft conclusions on the identification of customary international law, I refer to draft conclusion number eleven, the fact that a rule is set forth in a treaty instrument to which many states are parties does not mean that it is accepted as a rule of customary international law independent of that treaty rule. Moreover, the fact that strike action is protected under domestic laws on many states does not mean that those protective standards are codified and applied based on the belief that the state has an obligation under customary international law to legislate and apply those standards. Norway has never accepted that there is Norway has never accepted that there is a rule of customary international law binding on all states according to which the organisation of strikes by workers' organisations enjoy legal protection. A clear impression is that no such rule has been explicitly or implicitly accepted by the international community of states as a rule of customary international law. Indeed, while many states consider that there is a right to strike set forth in ILO Convention number eighty-seven and other treaties, even this position remains disputed, which is the reason why the interpretation of the Convention is brought to the attention of the court in the first place. Norway submits that the court is not asked in this case to decide on the scope of a right to strike pursuant to the Convention. The question posed to the court is a binary one: whether the right to strike is at all protected under the Convention or not. In the event that the court were to conclude in the affirmative, the court has not been asked to assess the precise scope of any right to strike, including limits with regard to measures taken by states to regulate and restrict the use of strike. The court should consequently avoid opining on that issue. This has been Norway's interpretation of the question that has been posed to the court and the basis upon which Norway has decided to consistently support the efforts to transmit the matter to the court. While we maintain that the court is not asked to opine on the scope of a right to strike under the Convention, Norway would like to reiterate its consistent position that the Convention does not prohibit states parties from regulating the exercise of strike action and interfering with such activities for the protection of societal interests. The protection offered under Article three offers a general protection against prohibitions in domestic legislation that would hinder any meaningful exercise of that type of activity. It does not prohibit states from regulating the exercise of strike action, including through the adoption of legislation permitting interference with strikes. This seems also to be recognised in the practice of the Committee on Freedom of Association. A fundamental principle in the Norwegian collective bargaining system is that the labour market stakeholders are responsible for collective agreements and for upholding industrial peace. This includes a duty to conduct industrial action in a responsible manner. There is nevertheless broad agreement that the government has an obligation to intervene if the industrial action poses a risk to life, health or safety or leads to other serious societal consequences. In such cases, the government will present a bill to parliament with a proposal for the strike in question to be prohibited and for the conflict to be resolved through compulsory arbitration by the National Wages Board, which is an independent representative organ. This system of compulsory arbitration has been practised in Norway historically and at no point has Norway accepted that the application of this system for the avoidance of serious societal consequences stemming from strike action would be contrary to its international obligations, including obligations under the Convention. This conclusion was also drawn by the Norwegian Supreme Court in a case concerning the validity of a decision by government to interfere with an industrial strike, the so-called OFS case that was decided in nineteen ninety-seven. Case reference is H R dash nineteen ninety-seven dash twenty-four dash A. As correctly referred to in the merits of the Supreme Court's decision, both the Norwegian parliament and the government of Norway has since the ratification of the Convention in nineteen forty-nine consistently upheld that Norway has not accepted any international obligation that prohibits the continued application of the system for compulsory arbitration for the settlement of labour disputes, in Norwegian referred to as tvungen løsnemt. The restrictive legal basis according to which this system of compulsory arbitration is structured and its exceptional use in itself underscores and highlights the centrality of the right to strike and its wide acceptance in Norwegian society as a legitimate measure organised by workers' organisations for the defence of the interests of workers. Mr President, honourable members of the court, in conclusion, I will reiterate the main observations of Norway in relation to the question posed to the court by the governing body of the ILO. One, the court has jurisdiction to issue an advisory opinion and the decision of the court on the question posed to it will be binding on the organisation and its members. Two, the freedom of organisation set forth in Articles three and ten of the Convention protects the right of workers' organisations to organise strikes as part of the activities undertaken by them in the defence of the interests of workers. Three, there is no rule of customary international law setting forth a right to strike and the court has not been asked to opine on this issue as it does not concern the interpretative issue that the governing body of the ILO has requested an answer to. Four, the right to strike set forth in the Convention does not prohibit states from taking steps to regulate the exercise of strike action but the court has not been asked to decide on the scope of the right to strike action set forth by the Convention and should refrain from doing so. Mr President, distinguished members of the court, this concludes our intervention. Thank you for your kind attention.
I thank the representative of Norway for his presentation. Before I invite the next delegation to take the floor,
La Coup!
Please be seated. The sitting is resumed. I now invite the next participating delegation, Panama, to address the court, and I call His Excellency Javier Martinez Acha Vazquez to the podium. You have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon. Mr. President, distinguished members of the court. It is my honor to appear before the members of the International Court of Justice, the main judicial body of the United Nations, in representation of the Republic of Panama. On behalf of my government, I would like to convey the high sense of responsibility with which the Republic of Panama approaches the legal question submitted by the International Labor Organization. The Panamanian state appears before this court motivated by the conviction that the consistent interpretation and application of international law, especially in the area of a fundamental level right, provides legal certainty to states, employers' organizations, and workers' organizations. The Republic of Panama upholds before this court a position based on history, law, and international practice, always seeking to strike a balance between the protection of fundamental rights and the state obligations. From this premise extends Panama's definitive convention that Convention Number 87 does not regulate neither expressly or implicitly the right to strike, which is exclusively a matter for the domestic law of states. On November tenth, twenty twenty-three, within the framework of its governing body, the International Labor Organization requested this court to issue an advisory opinion. The resolution raises the following legal question before the court: Is the right to strike of workers and their organizations protected by the freedom of association and protection of the right to associate Convention Number eighty-seven of nineteen forty-eight? With regard to this court's jurisdiction, to hear advisory requests, the Republic of Panama upholds that pursuant to Article sixty-five of the Statute of the Court, it is within its discretionary powers to accept or reject requests, and where appropriate, to define the scope of the legal response as the court deems it to be appropriate. It is important to recall that the preamble to Convention Number eighty-seven is based on a normative tradition that refers to the Ilon Constitution of nineteen nineteen and the Declaration of Philadelphia of nineteen forty-four. That declaration proclaims, among other principles, the affirmation of the principle of freedom of association, and that freedom of expression and association is essential to steady progress. These historical and normative references constitute, according to Panama, a relevant interpretative context that the court should take into account when examining such matters. Respect for the sovereign consent of a state is a cornerstone of international law. Accepting a broad interpretation of Convention Number eighty-seven will be tantamount to opening the door to unagreed obligations, which undermines legal certainty and erodes confidence in the multilateral system. In Panama's case, historical experience shows that strikes precede the freedom of association and its illegal regulation. The historical constant has been the concession of a strike as a collective and concerted suspension of war for purpose of asserting rights, without any rules or regulations to protect them in their beginnings. Freedom of association refers to the right of workers and employers to organize. Strikes, on the other hand, are means of collective action with economic and political implications. Equating these two rights could imply an interpretation that does not reflect the express will of the states in adopting Convention Number eighty-seven. The first strike in Panama dates back to the mid-nineteenth century, in the context of the development of capitalism in the Eastmus. Among the events that illustrate these assertions are the construction of the Trans- Ismian railroad, beginning in eighteen fifty, and the agro-industrial exploitation of bananas in the provinces of Chiriqui and Bocas del Toro. In eighteen fifty-three, workers at the Pacific Mill Steamship Company, based on the island of Taboga, went on strike to demand higher wages. Such action was repeated in eighteen fifty-five. Similar movement ensued. Railroad workers went on strike in eighteen sixty-eight and eighteen sixty-nine. Tobacco workers in Panama City did it in eighteen eighty, and strikes on the railways and docks took place in eighteen eighty-three and eighteen ninety-five. The Panamanian labor movement began to take on a more organic structure in the nineteen twenties, with the creation of the Federation Obrera, Workers' Federation, the Sindicato General de Trabajadores, General Workers' Union, in nineteen twenty-four, and the emblematic tenant strike of nineteen twenty-five. These collective actions mark a turning point toward the institutionalization of labor demands. Since the founding of the republic as an independent state, Panama has had four constitutions: those corresponding to the years of nineteen oh-four, nineteen forty-one, nineteen forty-six, and nineteen seventy-two. The constitutions of nineteen forty-one and nineteen forty-six expressly recognize the right to strike, including the possibility of special restriction when declared in public services, preserving the regulation of the exercise of this right to the law. In addition, both constitutions recognize the right to unionize, both for employers and for workers and professionals. The right to strike, as enshrined in the nineteen forty-six constitution, has been preserved unchanged in the current constitution of the Republic of Panama, adopted in nineteen seventy-two, and has remained so after being amended in four occasions: in nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen ninety-four, and two thousand and four. The labor code of the Republic of Panama enforced since nineteen seventy-two regulated the constitutionally established right to strike. It is the product of a legislative development that was markedly protective of collective labor disputes. Mr. Presidents and distinguished members of the court, two key conclusions, which are essential to opposition, arise from this historical development. First, in the Republic of Panama, strikes originated as a social and economic phenomenon that predated organized and legally recognized freedom of association. Second, the regulation was developed within Panamanian domestic law in response to national realities, not as a direct consequence of international law or Ilon Convention Number eighty-seven. The Panamanian state has ratified international instruments that reinforce this right, although they do not necessarily derive from the Convention Number eighty-seven. In nineteen sixty-six and nineteen sixty-seven, the Republic of Panama ratified Ilon Convention Number ninety-eight and Number eighty-seven on freedom of association and collective bargaining. In both cases, it took due note of the fact that the text of Convention Number eighty-seven does not expressly mention strikes, and it is therefore convinced that the regulation did not arise from that instrument, but such was the result of interpretations by the Ilon supervisory bodies. In nineteen seventy-six, Panama adopted the International Confine on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights. In the regional context, it is also important to note that in nineteen ninety-two, the Republic of Panama approved the additional protocol to the American Convention of Human Rights in the area of economic, social, and cultural rights, known as the Protocol of San Salvador. Article eight expressly establishes that the state parties shall guarantee the right to strike, exercises in accordance with the law of each country. It should be added that international human rights treaties and conventions ratified by the Panamanian state form part of the constitutional block by virtue of the ruling handed down by the plenary of the Supreme Court of Justice in exercising constitutional control throughout the country. Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, it is necessary to emphasize that the right to strike and its practice do not appear expressly regulated in the fundamental instrument of the Ilon. This includes the Ilon Constitution, the Declaration of Philadelphia, Convention Number eighty-seven and ninety-eight, as well as the nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and twenty-two Declaration of Fundamental Rights and Rights at War. The Panamanian state holds that Convention Number eighty-seven should not be given an interpretation differing from the will expressly adopted by the states. It for the holes that technical guidelines cannot be converted into binding legal obligations. In the view of the Republic of Panama, when directives are issued regarding the right to strike or when national provisions are assessed, just pronouncement do not create law, but rather constitute interpretations intended to facilitate the application of the conventions. In the present case, those guidelines pertain to the right of association, a matter distinct from the right to strike, so that admitting the contrary would impair the principle of tripartism and the normative functions that rest exclusively with the member states. The right to strike is part of the development of the domestic law of member states, taking into con-- taking into account the particularities of each labor system. However, it does not reach the dimension of a universal commitment with the significance that an international treaty entails, as an authentic expression of the collective will of the members to bind themselves through such an instrument. Convention Number eighty-seven must be interpreted in light of its object and purpose, which are confined to freedom of association and to the protection of the right to associate. While the preparatory words of a convention may constitute a relevant interpretative source, they do not confer authority to span its scope nor to establish obligation that the state did not expressly adopt. Consequently, Convention Number eighty-seven protects freedom of association and the protection of the right to associate, but cannot be considered-- but cannot be considered to implicitly include the right to strike, without exceeding the original intention of the states in ratifying it, the principle of consent of the states, and the objective and purpose of the convention itself. The position of the Panamanian state is that strikes as a means of pressure in hands of the workers, whether organized or not, have legal, political, and economic repercussions that go beyond simple association. For this reason, they cannot be understood as falling under Convention Number eighty-seven concerning the right to associate. Therefore, strike action is only regulated within the laws and particularities of each country, taking into account its cultural, economic, and social conditions, and not through an extensive interpretation of an international legal instrument such as Convention Number eighty-seven. In the Republic of Panama, the recognition and regulation of strikes have been essentially an internal process embodied in the constitution, the Labour Code, and the special laws. Therefore, the legal basis of this right to strike in Panama rests mainly on national law and not on an extensive interpretation of ILO Convention Number eighty-seven concerning freedom of association and protection of the right to associate, nineteen forty-eight. In light of the foregoing background and analysis, the Republic of Panama respectfully submits the following considerations: One, striking is an autonomous right with its own history, effects, and limitations, distinct from mere union membership or formation. Two, international legal certainty requires that states be bound only by what they have expressly accepted, in accordance with the principle of sovereign consent, recognized in international custom and in the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaty, nineteen sixty-nine. Three, that interpreting Convention Number eighty-seven is an extensive manner so as to infer the right to strike could impose obligations not agreed upon by the member states, thereby undermining the literal, teleological, and systematic interpretation of the convention and affecting the coherence and legal certainty of the international labour system. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, the Republic of Panama concludes its intervention by recalling that the right to strike was originally a social phenomenon rather than a legal norm, and that its subjective regulations arose from domestic law, not from international treaties. Consequently, the Republic of Panama refines the Convention Number eighty-seven does not expressly regulate the right to strike. From a legal perspective, Panama asserts that respect for the principle of sovereign consent of states and the rules of treaty interpretation enshrined in the nineteen sixty-nine Vienna Convention requires that international obligation be expressly assumed. Recognizing the right to strike as implicit in Convention Number eighty-seven would alter its scope and undermine international legal certainty. At the legal level, Panama stresses that the strength and legitimacy of international labour normative system lie in the tripartizing of the ILO. In view of the foregoing, the Republic of Panama respectfully requests this High Court to determine definitively and unequivocally that the right to strike is not implicit in Convention Number eighty-seven and that its regulation corresponds solely to the domestic law of the states. Such a pronouncement is indispensable to preserve the integrity of the convention, to ensure the stability and legal security of the international system, to refine the principle of sovereign consent of the states, and to safeguard the legitimacy of the normative system of the international labour organization. Thank you very much, President.
I thank the representative of Panama for his presentation. I now invite the next participating delegation, the United Kingdom, to address the court, and I call upon Mr. Daniel Stillett to take the floor.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, distinguished members of the Court, I am honored to appear before you on behalf of the United Kingdom. For a decade, the governing body of the ILO has tried to resolve the dispute underlying the question before the court. The United Kingdom supports the court's role in answering this request for an advisory opinion. The court plays a vital role in the international legal order by assisting organs and agencies such as the ILO in fulfilling their mandates in accordance with international law. The United Kingdom is a strong supporter of the ILO and its role in bringing businesses, trade unions, and governments together to develop and enhance international labour standards. The government is committed to strengthening the partnership between businesses, trade unions, and working people, and to ensuring that workers benefit from greater fairness and security at work while enhancing the competitive environment so businesses can flourish. The government's continued commitment to improving and refining workers' rights is reflected in the Employment Rights Bill currently before Parliament and in its consultation on making work pay. Industrial relations based around good-faith negotiation and collective bargaining can only enhance productivity. More broadly, the United Kingdom is committed to upholding the highest standards of international law through good-faith interpretations of international legal obligations. Adherence to the rule of law stimulates growth and enhances competitiveness. The United Kingdom's submissions are in three parts. First, I will address the question before the court. Second, Professor Webb will demonstrate that the right to strike is not absolute, and the diversity of state practice on the contours of the right confirm that it is not customary international law. It should therefore be regulated at a national level. Third, I will submit that the relevant case law of the European Court of Human Rights reinforces the United Kingdom's argument that there is a diversity of state practice even within one region, further undermining any claim to the right to strike being customary international law. Mr. President, the United Kingdom submits that the court should answer the question before it in the affirmative. The right to strike of workers and their organizations is protected under Convention Number eighty-seven. The United Kingdom believes that the right to strike, although not expressly laid down in Convention Number eighty-seven, is a corollary of the right trade unions freely to organize their activities. Article ten of the convention defines the term "organization" as "any organization of workers or of employers for furthering and defending the interests of workers or of employers." Article three-one provides that such organizations shall have the right to draw up their constitutions and rules, to elect their representatives in full freedom, to organize their administration and activities, and to formulate their programs. Article three-two states that public authorities shall not interfere with the lawful exercise of that right. Article eleven requires each ILO member to take all necessary and appropriate measures to ensure that workers and employers may exercise freely the right to organize. Read together, these treaty provisions protect the right of organizations to form associations with the goal of regulating working conditions. These organizations are empowered to determine the lawful activities they wish to exercise to achieve this goal, which logically includes strike action. The structure of Convention Number eighty-seven links the rights to organize and to strike, recognizing that these freedoms are integral not only to empowered workers but also to flourishing businesses. When workers are secure in their rights, they are better able to engage actively in the economy and to commit to their work with confidence. That sense of security encourages initiative and innovation, which in turn strengthens businesses and ultimately the wider economy. Mr. President, I now invite you to call Professor Webb to the podium.
I thank Mr. Stillett for his presentation. I now invite Professor Philippa Webb to the podium. You have the floor, Professor.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, distinguished members of the court, I am honored to continue the submissions of the United Kingdom. I will make three points. First, the right to strike is not absolute. It is subject to a range of conditions that limit its scope. Second, the diversity of state practice on the contours of the right confirm that it is not customary international law. Third, the absence of settled practice on the scope and conditions means that the right should be regulated at the national level. As a result, the court may wish to limit itself to answering the question before it regarding the protection under the Convention Number eighty-seven without expressing its views on how to define the scope and conditions of the right to strike. On a number of occasions, the court has recognized that a right is protected under a treaty without defining its parameters. In the La Grande and Avena judgments, the court held that Article thirty-six-one of the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations conferred individual rights directly on foreign nationals, but did not comprehensively define the scope of those individual rights. Turning to my first point, like many rights, the right to strike is qualified in nature because its exercise may prejudice the rights of other groups in society. Strike action may prejudice the economic and property rights of employers, the economic rights of other workers, the rights and freedoms of clients, customers, and business associates, and the rights and freedoms of service users, including those vulnerable members of the community. This is widely recognized by state and organization participants in these proceedings. The CEACR and the ITUC do not dispute that the right to strike cannot be considered as an absolute right. Certain categories of workers, such as civil servants, may be limited or prohibited from striking. Varied procedural conditions may be imposed, such as requirements for a ballot, a notice period, or prior recourse to mediation. Strikes often need to ensure minimum service levels with different ways of defining essential services. The state may have the power to requisition workers, and there are also limits on secondary or solidarity strikes and political strikes. Mr. President, I move to my second point, that the right to strike and its scope are not customary. The court has not stated that there is a set number of states that can be said to constitute general or settled practice, but the practice must be widespread, representative, and consistent. Being party to a convention does not permit the inference to be drawn that states are acting pursuant to a rule of customary international law. As the court stated in the asylum case, where a potential rule discloses so much uncertainty and contradiction, so much fluctuation and discrepancy, it is not possible to discern any constant and uniform usage excepted as law. Even if the court considers that the core of the right to strike is customary, this does not mean that the rights per numbra of conditions, limitations, and qualifications are customary. And as confirmed by the court's jurisprudence, even where the existence of a right might be clearly established, its application in particular situations might not be susceptible to a definitive conclusion in view of the present state of international law. Mr. President, that brings me to my third point. The great diversity of state practice on the right to strike reflects the nature of the right. The scope and conditions will depend on the industrial relations practices and traditions of each state, economic circumstances, and political choices. The exercise of the right must therefore be regulated at the national level. This position is endorsed by various participants, including Australia, Bangladesh, the Business Africa Employers Confederation, and the International Organization of Employers. In its statement adopted at the twenty fifteen Tripartite Meeting, the government group, consisting of thirty-two governments, noted the multifaceted regulations that frame the right to strike in various states and concluded that the scope and conditions of the right are regulated at the national level. The ITUC also notes that a hundred and fifty states regulate the terms of strike actions. To take one important example of the diversity of state practice, the right to strike and minimum service levels and essential services. In a survey of thirty-nine jurisdictions conducted by the United Kingdom from nearly every region of the world, twenty jurisdictions permit strikes in essential services if minimum service levels are maintained. The definition of essential services varies from state to state. Research by the International Labor Office in twenty nineteen observes that what is meant by essential services in the strict sense of the term depends to a large extent on the particular circumstances prevailing in a country. A state may define essential services as being limited to indispensable medical and hospital services or services at prisons, while others may have a significantly broader definition, including any transport service for the carriage of passengers or goods by air and any postal, telegraph, or telephone service. In other jurisdictions, essential services can extend to university academics. In some states, employees in essential services are generally prevented from striking, but minimum service levels can be agreed to allow workers to take part in strikes. Another approach is simply to prohibit strikes in essential services with no minimum service level protections. In the UK, there were no legal requirements for staff to provide a minimum level of service in any sector until the Strikes Minimum Service Levels Act twenty twenty-three. The Employment Rights Bill, upon royal assent, will repeal that legislation, reversing the position in the UK to what it was prior to twenty twenty-three. However, there remain certain categories of essential workers, such as the armed forces and police, for whom strike action is prohibited. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the court, for your kind attention, and I request that you please call Mr. Stillett back to the podium to conclude the submissions of the United Kingdom.
I thank Professor Webb for her presentation. I now give the floor again to Mr. Stillett. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, my final submission is that the relevant case law of the European Court of Human Rights on the scope of the right to strike reinforces the United Kingdom's position on the legal implications of the question before the court. Article eleven-one of the European Convention on Human Rights protects the right to freedom of association with others, including the right to form and join trade unions for the protection of interests. Under Article eleven-two, that right may be subject to such restrictions as are prescribed by law and are necessary in a democratic society in the interest of national security or public safety, for the prevention of disorder or crime, for the protection of health or morals, or for the protection of the rights and freedoms of others. The test of justification under Article eleven-two recognizes that the regulation of trade union rights involves the balancing of competing interests between different individuals, organizations, and groups in society. Moreover, Article eleven-two provides that Article eleven shall not prevent the imposition of lawful restrictions on the exercise of these rights by members of the armed forces, of the police, or of the administration of the state. The European Court has recognized that Article eleven of the European Convention on Human Rights protects the right to strike, but it has not recognized it as an essential element of the right to freedom of association protected by Article eleven. The European Court has also recognized that in the context of industrial relations, states enjoy a wide margin of appreciation. This reflects the sensitive character of the social and political issues involved in achieving a proper balance between the respective interests of labor and management and the high degree of divergence between the domestic systems in this field. The Strasbourg Court has made determinations on the scope of states' wide margin of appreciation in respect of most of the limitations. In respect of the union's democratic mandate required to approve industrial action, Article eleven does not secure any particular treatment of Article eleven does not secure any particular treatment of trade unions or their members. In RMT, a challenge to statutory ballot notice requirements was held to be manifestly without foundation and ruled inadmissible. As regards the position of civil servants, in finding a prohibition on striking to be justified, the Court noted that strike action is not the only means by which trade unions can protect the relevant occupational interests and contracting states are in principle free to decide what measures they wish to take in order to ensure compliance with Article eleven, as long as they thereby ensure that trade union freedom does not become devoid of substance. While restrictions may be imposed on the right to strike of workers providing essential services, the Strasbourg Court has held that a complete ban requires robust reasoning from the state to justify its necessity. In Ognivenko, the Court also appeared to accept that minimum service levels may be capable of being compatible with Article eleven, but indicated that any alleged violation of Article eleven will turn on the particular facts of the case. Finally, restrictions on secondary strike action are likely to constitute an interference with Article eleven-one, requiring justification under Article eleven-two. Whether that restriction can be justified will again turn on the facts of the particular case, which informs the margin of appreciation enjoyed by the state in question. In finding in RMT that the ban on secondary action in the UK legislation was justified, the Strasbourg Court considered the varied comparative picture which reveals a spectrum of national positions ranging from a broadly permissive stance in countries such as Greece, Finland, Norway and Sweden to those that do not recognise or permit it. Having expressly acknowledged the diversity of the deep structural and cultural differences among European states in the field of industrial relations, the Strasbourg Court found that the fact that the UK was one of a small group of European states to adopt this stance did not in itself mean that the domestic authorities have stepped outside the legitimate margin of appreciation in regulating this aspect of trade union activity. Having considered the context and history of the legislation, the European Court concluded that the ban did not disclose an unjustified interference with Article eleven since the applicants were still able to exercise the essential elements of the right in representing their members by negotiating on their behalf. The Court concluded that, in this legislative area of recognised sensitivity, the respondent state enjoys a margin of appreciation broad enough to encompass the existing statutory ban on secondary action. Mr. President, the United Kingdom submits that the right to strike is protected under Convention Number eighty-seven. It is not unqualified, and it is for each state to regulate the right at the national level, enjoying a wide margin of appreciation. But it is a key part of the framework for protecting the fundamental rights of workers. It not only provides security for workers, but leads to greater, not less, economic prosperity overall. Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Court, for your kind attention. This concludes the submissions on behalf of the United Kingdom.
I thank the representatives of the United Kingdom for their presentation. I now invite the next participating delegation, Egypt, to address the Court, and I call upon Ms. Jasmine Musa to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Distinguished members of the Court, it is an honour and a privilege to appear before you again on behalf of the Arab Republic of Egypt in this important advisory opinion in which the governing body of the International Labour Organisation seeks the opinion of the Court to clarify whether the right to strike is protected under the ILO's Freedom of Association and Protection of the Right to Organise Convention, also known as Convention eighty-seven. There is no doubt that the right to peaceful strike exists under international law and is a fundamental aspect of trade union freedom as well as a tool for achieving the social and economic rights of workers. Under Article eight of the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights, which Egypt ratified in nineteen-eighty-two, the state's parties undertake to ensure the right to strike, provided that it is exercised in conformity with national legislation in the particular country. Throughout its history, Egypt has honoured the role and contribution of labour to society. Article fifteen of Egypt's twenty-fourteen constitution enshrines that peaceful strike is a right regulated by law. Under Article eight, society is based on social solidarity, while Article thirteen of the Constitution provides that the state shall protect workers' rights and strive to build balanced work relationships between both parties to the production process. The state shall ensure means for collective negotiations and prohibit unfair dismissal as regulated by law. Egypt continues to strive for a fair and balanced relationship between workers and employers for the benefit of society and social justice. The newly adopted Labour Law Number fourteen of twenty-twenty-five, which only entered into force on the first of September, after extensive societal dialogue and consultation with the social partners as well as with the ILO, provides a comprehensive legal framework for the protection of workers' rights, including by regulating the right to strike and establishing labour courts to settle disputes. Distinguished members of the Court, Egypt strongly believes that international recognition of the right to strike establishes a fair balance between the parties in industrial relations, strengthens social peace and constitutes an essential guarantee for achieving social justice in an increasingly challenging and uncertain global environment. Denying this right would undermine trade union freedoms and weaken workers' ability to advance their legitimate interests. Today, this august Court is called upon to pronounce itself on the specific question of whether the right to strike of workers and their organisations is protected under the Freedom of Association and Protection of the Right to Organise Convention. The question is therefore not whether the right to strike is protected under general international law, but rather under the terms of this particular convention. The matter does not concern the right to strike in the abstract or in general, but whether the broad, extensive and detailed interpretations of the scope and limits of this right, as adopted by the relevant expert bodies, may be considered part of ILO Convention eighty-seven and thus monitored under the relevant mechanisms. Referring this matter to the esteemed Court is important to clarify the legal obligations of states that are parties to the convention. Egypt respectfully submits that this question is a matter that is regulated under the principles of the Law of Treaties, specifically the core principles of treaty interpretation enunciated under Articles thirty-one and thirty-two of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties. In order to avoid repeating what has already been presented by other parties in these proceedings, Egypt's submission will therefore focus on clarifying the relevant methodology for treaty interpretation as enunciated under the VCLT. The present statement will therefore focus on the following. First, I will elaborate on the interpretive rule established under Article thirty-one of the VCLT. And second, I will clarify the meaning of subsequent practice and its relevance to treaty interpretation and the role of expert bodies in this regard. Mr. President, first, with respect to the general rule of interpretation. According to Article thirty-one, paragraph one of the VCLT, a treaty shall be interpreted in good faith in accordance with the ordinary meaning to be given to the terms of the treaty in their context and in light of its object and purpose. This rule reflects customary international law. But how exactly is this interpretive rule to be applied? Egypt acknowledges that, as confirmed by the International Law Commission, the legally relevant interpretation of the text is uncovered through a single combined operation in which all means of interpretation in Article thirty-one should be thrown into the crucible. Egypt respectfully submits that it is generally accepted that the classical approach to treaty interpretation is based on the ordinary meaning of the text, a fundamental principle that has long existed as a norm of customary international law. The ILC has stressed that the text of a treaty must be presumed to be the authentic expression of the intention of its parties and that in law, there is only one treaty and one set of terms accepted by the parties and thus one common intention with respect to those terms. The starting point, therefore, is always the elucidation of the meaning of the text as intended by the treaty's parties. The intention of the parties is presumed to have the meaning reflected in the text, which is to be determined in the context of the treaty and in light of its object and purpose. It follows from this that to adopt an interpretation which runs counter to the clear meaning of the terms of a treaty would not be to interpret, but to revise the treaty. And it is thus self-evident that interpretation should not go beyond what is either expressed or necessarily to be implied in the terms of the treaty. This august Court, in its advisory opinion on the competence of the General Assembly for the admission of a state to the United Nations, has stated, and I quote, "The Court considers it necessary to say that the first duty of a tribunal, which is called upon to interpret and apply the provisions of a treaty, is to endeavour to give effect to them in their natural and ordinary meaning in the context in which they occur. If the relevant words in their natural and ordinary meaning make sense in their context, then that is the end of the matter." Mr. President, interpretation of the terms of a treaty does not take place in a vacuum, but rather in their context, which is defined under Article thirty-one, paragraph two of the VCLT, to comprise the treaty's text, its preamble, its annexes and any agreement or instrument between its parties or accepted by them in connection with the treaty. This means that all provisions of a treaty, together with agreements and instruments concluded in connection with the treaty and accepted by its parties, must be read as a unitary whole and must be considered as significant in expressing the intended meaning. In addition, the VCLT provides that any subsequent agreement between the parties or any subsequent practice in the application of a treaty establishing an agreed interpretation shall also be taken into account, together with the context. The language of the VCLT on this point is instructive. According to the International Law Commission's twenty-eighteen conclusions on subsequent agreement and subsequent practice, have stated that notwithstanding the authenticity of such agreements and practice, they are not necessarily legally binding. The Commission justified this because, according to the VCLT, subsequent agreements and subsequent practice are only to be taken into account in the interpretation of a treaty as opposed to other means of interpretation. Subsequent practice, therefore, is legally binding and decisive of the meaning to be attached to a treaty only when it is consistent and embraces all of the parties and when it indicates that the parties consider such interpretation to be legally binding upon them. The Commission also opined that subsequent agreement and subsequent practice are expressions of the understanding of the treaty by the state's parties themselves, and it thus emphasised that the intention and will of the collectivity of state parties is paramount. Notably, the ILC distinguished between subsequent practice establishing the agreement of the parties as an authentic means of interpretation under Article thirty-one and subsequent practice by one or more, but not all of the parties, to a treaty. The latter may be relevant under Article thirty-two as a supplementary means of interpretation. As such, the Commission found that it cannot constitute an authentic interpretation of a treaty by all of its parties and thus will not possess the same weight for the purpose of interpretation. Distinguished members of the Court, the question before the Court today invites an inquiry into whether the subsequent conduct of the parties to ILO Convention eighty-seven confirms an agreed interpretation that the said convention protects the right to strike and whether the opinions and recommendations of the Committee of Experts on the application of conventions and recommendations, the CEACR, can be considered a subsequent practice within the meaning of Article thirty-one of the VCLT or a supplementary means of interpretation under Article thirty-two. In this context, it must be emphasised that the International Law Commission has stated that the relevance of a pronouncement of an expert treaty body for the interpretation of a treaty is subject to the applicable rules of that treaty itself. The Commission also took a state-centric approach by clarifying that the opinions of expert bodies may give rise to subsequent practice where the parties expressly accept such an interpretation. And in this context, it is quite notable that the conclusions of the ILC clearly state that silence by a party shall not be presumed to constitute subsequent practice. Mr. President, a number of parties participating in these proceedings have relied on interpretive techniques that give precedence to what they consider to be the convention's object and purpose. On this matter, the Court has stated in the case concerning rights of the nationals of the United States in Morocco, and I quote, "In these circumstances, the Court cannot adopt a construction by implication of the provisions of the Madrid Convention, which would go beyond the scope of its declared purposes and objects. Further, this contention would involve radical changes and additions to the provisions of the Convention. The Court, in its opinion on interpretation of peace treaties, stated it is the duty of the Court to interpret the treaties and not to revise them." Distinguished members of the Court, I now turn to the supplementary means of interpretation. Article thirty-two of the VCLT provides that recourse may be had to the treaty's travaux préparatoires and the circumstances of its conclusion, but only as a supplementary means and in order to confirm the meaning resulting from the application of Article thirty-one or to determine the meaning when the interpretation, according to Article thirty-one, a) leaves the meaning ambiguous or obscure or b) leads to a result that is manifestly absurd or unreasonable. If the meaning of the text is clear, then there is no room to rely on supplementary means of interpretation. Conversely, in the case of ambiguity, the ordinary meaning may be clarified by reference to the travaux préparatoires as a supplementary means of interpretation. In the present case, where the Court defined that the application of the rules set out in Article thirty-one BCLT leaves the meaning of the text ambiguous, the Court may then refer to the supplementary means under Article thirty-two. In addition, the Court may have recourse to supplementary means, including the travaux préparatoires, to confirm the meaning resulting from the application of Article thirty-one. The guiding principle in this endeavour is the good faith effort to uncover the common intention of the parties, and this is no easy task, given the wealth of evidence submitted to the Court. Mr. President, in conclusion, the right to strike is a human right protected under international law. the right to strike is a human right protected under international law whose scope, limits, conditions and parameters are regulated under national legislation. It is a right deserving of recognition and respect by all states as an inseparable component of the broader framework of fundamental rights and freedoms upon which justice is founded. The question of whether the right to strike is included in the ambit of ILO Convention eighty seven is a matter to be determined by reference to the general rule of interpretation enunciated under Article thirty one VCLT and where the matter is still unclear, then by reference to the supplementary means under Article thirty two. The interpretive process is intended to elucidate the state parties' intention and consent and is exclusively applicable to the present convention in light of the particular circumstances, evidence and practice presented to the Court in relation to this advisory opinion. Egypt believes that a sound and consistent methodological approach by the Court that is faithful to its own jurisprudence and in which the tools of treaty interpretation are used to shed light on the terms of the convention would be of much value in clarifying the parties' obligations in light of the convention's text, its context and its evident object and purpose. Egypt looks forward to this esteemed Court's pronouncement which will be of utmost importance to clarify the legal obligations of states, provide legal certainty, preserve the integrity of treaty law and thus promote adherence to international law on the important matter of the legal protection.